Capital outlay, again, we talked about buses this year. Technology is a piece of that, why it might be trending up a little bit. And then tuition and other objects really is the, is the special expenses. And that's been somewhat consistent as well. Next page of the handout is fairly simple as far as a graph of one line is revenue and one line's expense. And obviously, the simplistic thing is, I hope the revenue is over expenses, right? More than hope, but that's the expectation is that revenue is over expenses. Now, you can see the gap between the two is getting tighter as, as time goes on. Now, way back in 2011, there was athletic field upgrades that went through and was expended out of the building fund. You know, so that was why, that's why there was such a, a large increase at will going from a 2011 to 2012. Next page has the comparative nine-month average daily attendance. This is found from the general state aid claim. It isn't the, the fall housing numbers or anything like that. So you may have looked at fall housing numbers recently. But again, this is what the state aid would be based on. You can see that there's been a steady increase in student count over the course from 2002 to 2017. The bottom piece is, again, a comparative estimated operating expense per pupil. The state, this is a mandated state calculation. And then also, we've put on here for the state average, which is the, the line above, and the district average is the line below. So for the most recent information available, 2016, the district is spending about $3,900 plus per student than the state average. It definitely includes the collar counties or the, the suburbs of Chicago, but it is comparing high school district, I mean, not high school, but unit districts only. Next page of the handout, I would say the, the top graph is probably one of the more important graphs here. There might be two or three here that are important. I think this one's important because, again, what we talked about earlier was that real estate taxes are the majority of revenue. So to see that the assessed value of the district is growing is a good thing because as assessed value grows, obviously, the district will bring in more real estate tax dollars. And then the bottom part, the comparative tax rate, you can see actually dropped a little bit this current year, and most of that is due to the increase in the assessed value at the top. The big increase there in 2013 to 14, just FYI, debt service and retirement levies. The next page of the handout has a historical look as far as where the operating fund balances of the district has been and where they are currently. There's two, there's two line, two lines here. The top line actually is, includes the advanced taxes that are received in June that are really to finance the next fiscal year. The bottom graph has those dollars pulled out. So you can see there's actually about a fourteen, fourteen million eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars between, and seventeen, the difference between that forty-one million and the twenty-six million. The other thing that we typically look at is taking a look at your fund balances of the district before advanced taxes and just doing a comparison to see how many, how many months worth of operating expenses you have in fund balance. And all the funds were, as far as the operating funds, ed fund, building fund, transportation fund are well within limits. The, the other thing to consider, I guess, is working cash. There isn't that much working cash. There's maybe nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of working cash, so. Next page of the handout is something called on-behalf payments. And this is what the state, in theory, pays into the TRS system on behalf of the district. In the current year, there was a change as far as the, how that number was derived. This year, it's actually the employer's share of the state's pension expense, so it's, and previous years calculated based on credible earnings. So it isn't that something drastically happened that's different. But this is something, not to be a fear monger, but this is something to look at, to have in front of you, to consider, to say if the state starts bantering back and forth, we sure would like to push some of our pension costs back to the districts. This is something to keep in your back of your mind. This is real dollars, it just means something to you. That's not to say that these, these would be the amounts, but it's definitely a baseline that you can kind of look at and say, okay, I understand, they're, they're paying into the system on our behalf. And just, it's not Halloween, but we're right around Halloween. As far as the state's share of the net pension liability of the district, anybody want to guess? And so they have a liability, the state does, a hundred and forty-three million dollars rounded. That's their share of the district's net pension liability. So the district has a share as well of the, not of this, but an additional share, two point six million. State, one point four three million, district, two point six. So I guess you can kind of see the, why, why the state would look at this and say, let's try to push back some of this. Next page of the handout is just to show you where you've been and where you are currently as far as outstanding debt is concerned. You can see in 2013, I believe, was the high watermark of seventy-six million dollars. And since then, the district has been paying down debt, and currently fifty-four million eight sixty-six of outstanding debt. Total capacity, or what could you borrow, a hundred percent of what you could borrow is about a hundred and twenty-six million. And you could borrow the difference in between a hundred and twenty-six and the fifty-four and another seventy-one million, or fifty-seven percent remaining. Not suggesting you do that, but it's a good thing to at least know you do have bonding Next page of the handout is to look and say, you know, it used to be in years past, we would sit there and we'd banter around, you know, real estate taxes are really important and we think commercial is, commercial and done, that must be the thing that carries the load. And as you can see, that's not necessarily true. The, the top line here, as far as a breakdown of the district's assessed value, five hundred ninety-five thousand is residential. And you can see the increases are probably larger than, well, they are larger than the commercial. Commercial's that next line underneath. And then you can see farm, industrial, and state railroad is the bottom line there. And then just historically, looking at the assessed value of the breakdown of the assessed value, where, where does it come from? So if you're, you're interested, and again, you can see the residential has exploded. Commercial, not to say it hasn't increased, it definitely has, but residential has really carried the pain. The last page is, as if you're a numbers person, it's the same information again. All right, well, that's the, that's the, everything I have as far as the handouts concerned. Let me see if there's anything. I don't know if you each have a copy of the audit report. Everybody does?
Yes.
Now, there's, there's only a few things in the audit report itself that I tagged that might, might be new. Well, it's not new information, but at least page fifty-nine, just to let you know that this, this analysis is here, it's something that's buried in the back, it isn't, you know, so it's an additional schedule, it's not an actual statement. But just to know that this is here, and it's, it's a schedule of revenue received and expenses dispersed before those advanced taxes that we talked about. And you can see the second line from the bottom, all the way to the right, nineteen million three hundred and thirty thousand, those are those dollars that were received in June, really meant to fund the next fiscal year. And, you know, I used to say it was kind of like a Christmas card picture when you take a snapshot of the district, you know, it's a Christmas card picture, everybody looks perfect. I've come to realize that I have even a better analogy now, that my daughter is a freshman and, and homecoming has come and gone. It's the same, it's the same concept, you know. You make sure the hair is right, the nails are right, the dress is right. And it's not really your choice here, I mean, this, this is the snapshot that all districts go through, you know, June 30th, it's the snapshot. But the district looks really good here, just because out of the nineteen million dollars of additional tax dollars that have been put into the balance sheet, it really goes towards funding that next fiscal year. So if you look for the, the third line from the bottom, it gives you a better idea as far as fund balances of the district. Where are those fund balances before advanced taxes? So like, the education fund has twenty million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so, and you can go across and take a look at each fund if you want, but that gives you more of an idea of how much fund balance or access do we have in each fund. I think that that's all I'm going to cover in the audit report. I mean, the audit report itself is, it's a, it has an unmodified opinion, I used to, I mean, I don't know if you've heard clean opinion before, but the, the terms have changed somewhat, but it's an unmodified opinion on a regulatory basis. Just an overview of the district, there's good financial results, we saw those. There's good operating fund balances, they're there. You're not reliant on the state for funding. I mean, I, I guess that can be a double-edged sword, but what we've seen in the past ten years is you're better off as a district not being reliant on the state for funding. Not like it's a choice of yours that you said, hey, we don't want any state aid, we'll do it. Right, okay, so, I mean, it's all formula-driven. Sales tax, right? I don't know if you've received a payment of sales tax yet.
We have just one in October. One hun, we got a hundred and ten thousand in October, and we're supposed to get a hundred and seventeen thousand in November, so it went up a little.
That's a big deal for the district, right? Maybe the, the negatives, if there are some, the low working cash fund balance, I mean, that's something that you do need a strong education fund balance because you're not necessarily backed up by a working cash or what you want to call a rating, a rainy day fund, or whatever, however you want to term that. The ed fund isn't backed up necessarily by that rainy day fund. I put a question mark on EAV, and it sounds like you're going to be going through that additionally tonight. And just the fact is, a question mark managing growth, right? We, we've been involved in some districts that have had the, the same rapid growth, right? And there you have the huge growth, and you build, 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 build. But if you don't stay on top of it, it's almost like you have to plan three or four years down the road when you don't have all the information for three or four years down the road. And, but you almost have to look out that far, otherwise you're stuck with the revenue growth contracting or being stagnant, and you're left with the buildings that are built and all the expenses associated with it. So in the past, you've done a great job of doing that, but definitely something to keep your eye on. So that's everything I have. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions.
I have a quick question for Karen. I'm just looking at the graphs and just trending. What year specifically was the deficit that we?
Which year?
Was that?
It was.
I thought it was 2011, but I'm wondering if it's?
No. It was.
Twelve thirteen, thirteen.
Twelve thirteen.
That would make sense.
It would have twelve thirteen, thirteen, fourteen was when we were dealing with the deficits. The budget cuts went in place for the fourteen, fifteen school year.
Does that make sense?
So that's where you see that dip and now?
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah. I'm just following the trend and looking at these two, and they're just, they keep getting closer together.
Right.
And then we have, we'll discuss next, but the EAV next year.
Right.
It's not as pretty as it used to be.
Right?
Yeah.
And then not only thinking about next year, but the next two years down the road.
Exactly.
I mean, so that's the other thing you almost have to look at, is thinking, okay, we're here today, we can look backwards, but where are we going?
At least we have that, to look backwards.
These graphs are really great, they're very helpful, thank you.
Russ, I have a question.
Yeah.
Of course, our administration's done a great job at being conservative with funds and getting us back on track, and I've said that numerous times, that they need to be committed for that. I have a question, though, about the schedule, the findings. We all have segregation duties as a finding, I don't, I don't have any question about the bond, I know about that. The misstatement of retirement benefits, what, does that have to do with the increase of payment in the pension, or is that something?
That is not this year, that's a previous year, that's, none of those are, those are all.
So this is 2016?
Yes. So none of those are on there, but what that was is, I claimed federal TRS on the July expenditure, and we didn't get paid until August when we did the TRS report. It was actually fixed before they.
So then they had no findings?
No findings.
Congratulations, that's a good feeling.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Even segregated duties.
And that's the only thing that I remember us having, right, a long time ago, was always segregation duties.
Yeah, it's been there since 2003, I believe.
This is not, wasn't it off last year?
No.
Oh, this is, okay.
Yeah, it was still on there last year.
Just to give you a history of it, so it had been a material weakness, segregation duties had, been a drop to something less than a material weakness. And this year, I mean, we have included in the letter that, I mean, it's, it isn't perfect, I don't know that anybody's is perfect. There's definitely things that, if we could spend some money, that.
No, we're not going to.
You're not going to.
Sorry, sorry.
I've already heard that one, no. But, but you know, if we could have some additional staff, that we could move things around, it would be ideal. It isn't necessarily ideal, like I said, nobody has ideal, but we felt like there's enough compensated controls that we could at least move it out of the report into the letter, so.
Any other questions? For Russ? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Russ. Okay, and Mrs. Beverlin will present information on the 2017 tax levy and answer any questions.
Drive safely.
Okay.
Where are you headed?
Uh, over towards the county.
Okay, well, have a nice ride.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the 2017 tax levy, when we go into the regular board meeting, we'll approve, it's on the agenda, approve the tentative levy, which you have to do, and then in December we'll approve, approve the actual levy. So here's the timeline, which I kind of just went through, but tentative levy discussed and approved. If we have to have, we would set the hearing, set the date for the truth and taxation hearing, and then December, hold the hearing, the board approves the actual levy, and then it, the levy has to be to the county no later than the last Tuesday in December, which is, this year is December 26th, which the county, I am guessing, is not going to be open on December 26th, so December 19th is it. If it doesn't get there, you don't get any money. So it will be there by the 19th. Should be there the 14th, but. So this is our year-over-year sixth-day enrollment, so it shows where we, where we, where we are now and what the projections are to be for 2018, 19. And 2018, 19, those projections are about where we're at right now, this year, so.
So they may be off.
And that's what we don't know, they may be off. They're, I think the, the forty-four twenty-nine for sixth-day enrollment is probably, was low, I think, because we've seen that increase so much. But that's what we want to be. We're not, we're not growing by leaps and bounds anymore, but the projections for next year are low too.
We've looked at them, I think they're low.
Okay.
Well, I would think if we're already there.
Yeah, we're at forty-four seventy-four, actually, I think, today.
Today?
Yeah.
But the projections for next year are not, they're actually, I think, when I looked at it, it was like negative point, negative something as far as.
So the projection's not forty-four seventy-four? Pardon? Is the projection for 2018, 19 forty-four seventy-four?
The projection for eighteen, nineteen, based on the, what Decision Insight did with the numbers, yes, it's forty-four seventy-four. So here's the education fund. I just wanted to show the fund balances year-over-year, so you see that they're going up a little bit each year. The proposed tax rate for the ed fund is still two point seven percent. That is the max that we can request in the levy and, as well as the lease levy in special education. So we're, those will remain the same, and we'll get the increase in EAV is about one point seven percent, is what Dave Ryan has said. Again, operations and maintenance, it's a max, it's maxed out as well at point four seven five. If, depending on what happens with the county sales tax, there could be some pressure that could be taken off of that fund, but at this point, we have so many projects and maintenance projects and things like that that need to be done, I'm guessing that will still maintain into the future. Then for the transportation fund, this is the one, we have a very healthy balance in the transportation fund. And it is, I, it is still being levied at the point two max percent. The transportation rotation that we have next year is a big year to replace some vehicles, so that will, that, we're going to see that fund balance go down, assuming that the state pays transportation this year, so, you know what I mean, as far as how many we'll actually be able to buy.
And so can any, do any salaries come out of this fund, like bus driver?
Bus drivers.
Director of Transportation?
Yes, bus drivers, the director of transportation, the mechanic, anything that has to do with.
So there's nothing else that can be added from the education fund to the transportation fund?
Nothing else from the education fund that could go to the transportation fund, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, like a portion of the superintendent's salary, I don't know.
You can't, you could, a portion of Tom who oversees, oversees Pete in transportation, it's like, I think fifteen percent this year is, of that is in there, there's not a whole lot. Where we can do more of that would be into TORT. It's, that's an easier push. Now, as, transportation, we get reimbursed for Pete from the state, that's part of it. We would not get reimbursed for anyone else, only one administrator is reimbursed as far as that goes, but. And then FICA medic, FICA, IMRF, these are, this is actually going to go down because we don't need as much money in IMRF, it's built back up to where we want it, and because the rate is going up, it's going to stay level with the amount of money we get, but the rate will drop. Working cash, we have it set to be at the point oh five max, which will bring us to about one point five, one point six million dollars if we don't have to use it, so building that back up. And as Russ said, let's kind of look at the two between ed fund and working cash as far as what you really have to support everything. Working cash can be used for all funds, though, it's not just the ed fund. Then the TORT fund, there is no maximum tax rate for the TORT fund. We can levy to the extent that we feel that we need it, and I am increasing it slightly next year so we can continue to build that reserve sum as well, but also because the tax rate is already going to go down, but it's going, because the bonds are lower, it's going to go back up in a couple of years, and I don't want it to drop so much that we have to turn around and raise it a significant amount again, because that does not go over well, and it's, the TORT fund is a good place to build some of that up, because we can use, we can move some things into the TORT fund to take some pressure off the ed fund if we need to be. And then the health life safety fund, it is at its max, this is for the projects that are, the architect recommends during the ten-year health life safety survey or are required by the ROE during the annual surveys. This is a fund that up until a few years ago, we didn't levy for at all, so we're able to use that to do, it's like boiler replacement projects, roof projects, things like that. And then debt services fund, as you can see, it's going down by point oh five percent, so that's right where we want it to be.
And when you say the bond will go down, is this the bond?
That's the bond, the interest rate for, or not the interest rate, I'm sorry, the tax rate for the bonds actually goes down next year by point oh five percent.
But in a couple of years, you said?
In a couple of years, it'll go back.
And so?
Uh, so when we look at, so here's the tax rate by year with all of those added up. So seventeen, eighteen, right now, we're at four point five eight percent. With everything that's up there, we'll be at four point five four. So it's actually still going down, you know, four one-hundredths. But I think it's something we can balance that as we have to bring it back up for, when the bonds come through. And depending on what happens with EAV going forward, that could impact it as well. But I think, I don't think that we want to maintain it at four point five eight, I think we're asking for too much money in doing that, because we don't need that money in the funds where we could get it. And so it's just not the right thing to do.
Nice job. Very nice.
And so here's your equal, here's the equalized assessed value for the next year's, and Dave Ryan, for the one point seven, gave that to me the end of October. That accounts for OSF and everything we know as far as coming off the books. So they should not change, it, it could possibly change if something comes off that we're not aware of right now, something gets settled at PTAB or something like that. But he was pretty, he was pretty confident in that number, and it won't be a major, major decline or anything, there's nothing huge.
Did he give an off-the-record comment for the year nineteen twenty?
Did he make an off-the-record comment?
Off-the-record.
Can we have it off the record?
I mean, does he have a?
He has not given me anything, he won't, he usually won't go out that far because he just doesn't know, because he's actually looking at the actual assessed values and seeing what's happening, so.
And do we know yet about that repayment of the hospital tax?
That is all included, yes. We have, it's all in there, so that, if that one point seven includes the amount that we lost and the amount that we have to repay.
Oh, okay.
Which is good, that it's still one point seven with that coming off, so. And then this is the overall picture. So it shows from 2016 to 2017 what the rates are, and then the new, in the far right column is what we're looking at as far as new money for each specific levy amount. So we're looking at, if you add special ed, regu, the main education fund in the levy, you're looking at just a little over about five hundred thousand dollars for new money into transport, into the ed fund. This is the ballooned levy, and I think we talked about this last year, where we're going to ask for more money than we think we can actually get in case that EAV does go up for some reason. So what we, so this is what you'll actually see on the levy certificate, the certification page, but we will budget off of this page, and we'll hope for this one, but. And so here's the new revenues for 2018, 19, based on what we know right now. So we've got taxes, fees, the, the fee increase is because of the high school coming in for one-on-one, one-to-one, and so that's the additional twenty-five dollars for those students. And then the one hundred and forty-five thousand is investments and things like that that weren't in revenue for this year. And so as you can see, building transportation toward those all, there's no local money that really supports those. And then these are the new costs for existing programs, so, and like I said, this is based on what we know now, this is subject to change, could, it'll go, salaries should not change, but as far as programs and things like that, depending on what decisions are made as the budget and the next year is planned. But we are looking at a total of about six hundred, two hundred and forty-seven, six hundred and six thousand two hundred and forty-seven in the ed fund just for existing programs. But that includes the expansion of one-to-one and adding the computer science program that the AP computer science class that was talked about in October, as well as technology programs and systems, just the upkeep to keep those going, because there's just an increased service fee. So those are the expenses, so those are the expenses that are in there right now that is in there with a balanced budget for the ed fund. Now, these are new programs or staff that are not included. The, last year, we talked about the alternative ed program and adding more staff. The alternative ed aid is not in there, the cost for that one, that staff member is not in there, IEP software is not in there, that's something that Alyssa is looking at as far as IEP and how to track all of the special ed data. And then the elementary library aides aren't in there. So those are all conversation pieces that we have to have.
How many aides are the, the?
How many library aides? What I did, it's, it was enough to have a library aide in the building, in each building three days a week. For five point seven five hours, because we only hire up to twenty-nine hours, because we don't have, because they don't have insurance.
Is that alternative education, what we call the at-risk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So right now, in the budget, we just have the one that we had this year?
Correct. The one that we have this year is.
And there's one aide, and this would be?
Yes.
That would be for the additional aide?
Everything that's in the budget this year is still in the budget.
Okay.
For next year, and then these additional costs added in. And I just put these in, because I, when we talked with Karen, she'd asked about, you know, looking, what are our, what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, and this was what I could come up with right now to be able to do it without any other decisions being made. Um, so here's your surplus and deficit. As you can see, the ed fund, we're at eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, it's not a lot. So now, what is not in? So now, what is not included in this number for revenue is anything new as far as general state aid that we may get, and which we will know in January. So hopefully, if the money comes through as they expect it, we're looking at about another hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that'll help with some of the other programs and things like that.
So this does not include those new programs mentioned on the previous page?
It does not include these mentioned on this page, no.
Difficult, yeah. So we're projected to be a surplus this year of five hundred?
We're projected to be a surplus of about five hundred thousand this year.
So does that, are you kind of rolling that over, so that's one point one or not?
It is, this is revenue to expenses going forward. There will still be the, five hundred thousand is not budgeted now, so it's not included in this, so we should, we still have the money that wasn't budgeted for this year that we have to work with.
Which is how much, five hundred?
About five hundred thousand. That's assuming that we don't need any of that money before the end of the year.
You've been on track for the first three or four months, even outperforming that, I think, right?
Yeah, we're running right around ninety-eight percent.
And do you anticipate continuing that, or is it too early to tell?
Um, it, it should continue unless something major comes up that we're not aware of, but it should continue as far as salaries and things like that, those are pretty set. What could not get over would be special ed expenses, something like that, that could come through, that we may have to hold any for.
So if we stay at that track, and you had about a two percent cushion, right, wasn't it two percent, and if that's two percent, so that's, we could potentially be at a one point two million dollars going into that year, which would give us maybe some.
Yes, yeah, so that one, if you did that, that one point two would roll into the reserves, which would go there.
But from a budgeting standpoint, you've got that, that little pay or fee, right? That margin that we're still playing with.
Yes, we're still playing with that.
Karen, does that include?
It gets smaller and smaller.
I'm sorry, does that include any positions for growth?
That has three, and it includes three positions for growth, so those new salary.
District, K-12 or just?
K-12, it has the three positions for growth.
And that's based on the enrollment projection that we have?
Yes, based on where we're at now and what we're looking for. And that three is in addition to what's needed for any staffing that is included with the programs that were in the budget.
Does this include anything with the sales tax revenue that's coming in?
It does not include anything with the sales tax, this is really just looking at the tax money that's coming in. So, and the sales tax revenue will actually fall in fund sixty, which is the construction fund, so it won't hit any of these funds. What that's going to do is take some pressure off the operations and maintenance fund to start protecting that somewhat, and being able to do some of the larger projects that we need to do. And it does, yeah, and like I said, it doesn't include the general state aid, the additional that we should get this year on the new, with the new formula.
Okay, nice job.
Are there any other questions?
At the end, okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, great job. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Abby Humboldt moved to adjourn, Cheryl Blue seconded, is there discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.